Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board Meeting for November 12th, 2019. The meeting is being recorded and is available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the Douglas website. We'll come to order at 7:03. First item on the agenda is a public hearing, Valley Realty Management, LLC, application for an accessory apartment special permit, 7 Mechanic Street. In accordance with the Town of Douglas accessory apartment zoning by law in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, the Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application of Valley Realty Management, LLC, for an accessory apartment special permit. Property location is 7 Mechanic Street, Sessas Map 163, Apostle 87 in Douglas, Mass. Public hearing is being held on Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the community meeting room, Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. A copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan will appear at the time and place designated. I'm Mr. Smacks, Chairman of Douglas Planning Board. Public hearing is now open. Is there somebody to present?
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Rob Knappich. It's a pleasure to be before you again. It's been a while, and tonight I appear before you all to have a Valley Realty Management, as you mentioned. And with me is Gerald Jackman from Valley Realty Management. And this is, as you said, an application for an accessory apartment special permit for the property at 7 Mechanic Street. I suspect that many of you are familiar with it, but in case not, it's not far from here. It's the site of the Jackman Blue Journal Home, and the property has been in the Jackman family for, I think, at least three generations, and it's been used as a funeral home for many years. It consists of a large dwelling with an addition from about, I think, 13 or so years ago. There's also a barn and a large parking area. And this is an application that the board has granted in the past. In 2006, the board granted this very permit, an accessory apartment special permit, to Mr. Jackman, where his sister resided in the property. And some time has gone by. She no longer does. There's another occupant, and because the permit expired, this is really a renewal in effect of that permit with a few differences. As we explained in our letter, and as you probably know, the property is within the Village Business Zoning District. It's surrounded by a lot of residential uses. It's a multi-use property, the primary use of which is as a funeral home, a secondary use of which is as a residential. And this specific application relates to a portion of the building that was added on in 2005 or '06. So we do believe, as we explained in the letter, that the application meets the special permit criteria. We've asked for a primary waiver. You are authorized, as you know, to waive strict requirement with the special permit requirements. And the primary waiver is that Mr. Jackman does not reside at the property, although he did previously. He no longer does. But nonetheless, with that waiver, we do believe that we meet the special criteria, special permit criteria, which is all set forth in our application and our letter, beginning on page 3, which talks about the standards, the first of which we don't meet. As I said, Mr. Jackman doesn't reside there, so we asked for a waiver. Other criteria talk about zoning. It is in the Village Business Zoning District. And the bylaw talks about this use being allowed in residential zoning districts. I think that we asked the board to consider the Village Business District, for purposes of this application, to be a residential zoning district because single-family residences are allowed. The criteria talks about parking. There is ample parking. At least three off-street spaces are required. There's a large parking lot with probably at least a few dozen parking spaces. The requirement is that the accessory apartment not exceed 900 square feet. As shown on the plan submitted, the approximate area is 700 square feet. The lot is connected to public sewer, so there's no issue with utilities. The accessory apartment is required to be constructed in conformance with the building code. When it was constructed in 2006, Mr. Jackman was issued a building permit and thereafter a certificate of occupancy certifying that the property did meet the building code. The board is allowed to deviate where the deviation will not be detrimental to the neighborhood or the intent of the bylaw. And in our letter, we explained that because the property has been used for many years as the site of both a funeral home and living quarters of Mr. Jackman's family and others, the continued use in that same exact fashion should have no adverse effect or not be detrimental to the neighborhood. The bylaw also talks about traffic flow and safety. The accessory apartment is small and therefore a very low intensity. The paved parking area, we believe, is therefore more than ample to serve the occupant of the accessory apartment without any adverse effect on traffic flow or safety. The criteria talks about socioeconomic or community needs. There's obviously a need for housing in any community. We feel there's also a benefit from a security standpoint to having the property inhabited. As I mentioned, utilities are adequate, public services are adequate. No proposed change to the building, either internal or external, so there should be no effect on the neighborhood character. So for all those reasons, we ask that the board consider granting the application for an accessory apartment to Valley Realty Management. Thank you.
Are they going to be the only occupants in the building?
On the layout, on the full plan, where is this on this particular floor plan?
It's the floor. It's bottom right on the accessory.
Over here?
Yes.
Okay.
What was it used for before?
It didn't exist before. We put an addition on the funeral home down below, and when we did, we put the apartment up above.
So the last one?
That's recent?
2006.
Was it used in, it was used in the apartment at one point, right?
They had agreed the special permit when he was living.
It was used in the first one, right? That's why it expired?
It was, yes.
Okay, so it was previously used as an.
The permit he had.
Bill, any comment?
Yeah, so we might have a few new conditions in our current permit that we issued since he first came in with his accessory apartment, namely the metering for the water and the utilities. So I wanted to make sure that, in fact, there's not separate metering for the apartment.
Is there separate metering?
There's not.
It's on the same meter. Everybody's on the same meter?
What about you? What's the topic?
I did have a conversation earlier with Jerry, and I don't believe you're seeking any kind of relief from applying every three years or renewing the permit.
No, we didn't specifically ask for that, but if it's possible to seek that relief, then if it's possible to amend the application here, then, you know, we would ask the board to consider that amendment. I didn't know it was possible to waive the requirement.
Well, that was just based on my conversation with Jerry in the hallway.
We just have everybody renew every three, every three years. So everybody's on a running clock.
So we know what's going on, too.
Because things change in three years, and we don't want to do an open permit like that.
Make sure the person doesn't change. Stay there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, we change it anyway.
Anything else? Bill? That's it? That's it? Cool. Would any of the comments be questioned?
As long as the meters are all.
It's going to be conditioned anyway.
Yeah, what was the one condition?
That the occupant, the owner, is not occupying this space.
Yeah.
That would be for 6, 1, owner of the residence in which the accessory apartment is located shall occupy one of the dwelling units.
Yeah, I have no problem. Does anybody else have any problems?
No.
That's fine.
And then I would suggest you also have a finding that, for the purposes of this application, that the VB district is viewed as a residential district.
Was that requested?
Yes.
I know waiver?
Not a waiver, it's a finding.
Finding? Yeah, because they think if we look at all the VBs.
Do you want to ask the audience? Let me have the closing.
Is anybody here on this application who wants to speak? Seeing and hearing none.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mike Zee, seconded by Tracy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, abstained. Motion carries. Do you want to make a motion to?
Make a motion to grant the waiver that is in Section 3.3.3.1, that the owner of the residence in which the accessory apartment is located shall occupy one of the dwelling units.
Second.
Somebody second that?
Yep.
Jake. Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Jake. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, abstained. Motion carries. And the third one was?
It's going to be a finding.
Yeah, a finding. Yeah, we don't have to vote on that, though. It's just a finding, right?
No, it'll be a finding.
Make a motion to grant the accessory apartment special permit application for Valley Realty Management, LLC, with the finding that VB district shall be treated as residential just such use.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Zee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, abstained. Motion carries. Well, I'll say, Jerry. Thank you for coming in.
Good job today. Good job, Bob. I want to start. Yeah, thanks. Appreciate you help. Maria's at home, so that's why we don't have an decision draft. We don't have to sign at the next meeting.
Nobody asked that question.
I asked Gerald.
He does a good little service. What? He does a good little service. Hey, second, I'm on your agenda. 112 Maple Street, accessory apartment special permit. But, yep?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm up for renewal on my accessory apartment permit, and I think this is my third renewal. It expires in December, and I'm here for some advice or consult of how to fill out my application this year, because my husband and I retired. My daughter Becky was living in the accessory apartment, and we transferred ownership of the house into Becky's name. So now I'm living in the apartment, and she and her husband and their baby are living in the house.
Downsized.
More common than what? I mean, you're not.
Yep, so we just went, oop, like this. But when I was filling out my renewal, the occupant and the owner have switched. It's still the same people, so I just wanted to know how to proceed to fill out the paperwork for your next meeting.
I can't answer that one.
Under the new ownership?
So I sent the question to Town Council with a copy of. The question is in your packet. The issue is the permit that was issued, as well as the regulations that we have, the zoning bylaws, say that once ownership changes, you need a new special permit. Now, Jay responded by saying he thinks that we can just get a ministerial amendment to the extension, but it appears that the letter of the law requires a new special permit, so it sounds like he's saying, you know, we can go either way.
Of course.
From a forward-thinking perspective, I think the owner, the daughter, would benefit from having a new, clean special permit.
Right.
If you want to give them a little break, I suppose we could waive the application fee while still charging them for advertising. And then there's some correspondence also from the building commissioner, the zoning enforcement officer, and he suggests that a new special permit be filed.
You should pay for chance. It really keeps it clean that way. Because now the deeds in the daughter's name and all that, and to keep it clean on the file.
So I'll file for a new application, but I'd like to request a waiver of the administration for the review.
Except for the.
Except for the advertising. I guess I'd pay for the advertising again.
You'd have to pay for that anyways with the renewal.
Okay.
That's what.
No, renewals.
No, for renewal. I mean, I'm fine with that. Where, I mean, you're just swapping where you're at.
Yeah.
At least personally, I am.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Anybody else?
So would we still have to do the advertising?
Yes. Yeah, you have to do it for the advertising.
But that's going to be a new permit, not an extension.
It'd be a new special. To keep it clean.
But we'll waive, we'll waive the fee. The new fee, not a renewal fee.
Not a renewal, yeah.
The review.
I think it does open the door that maybe we should look at adding that type of item in our bylaws at some point, when it is common ownership.
So rare. How many times has this happened?
You've got to find out more. A little language.
The thing is, it's filed on the deeds. So to keep it all clean.
Agree. Just so it's written out more. That's all.
I don't figure it has to be a bylaw.
I think it's fine.
Case by case, babe.
I think it's fine the way it is and request a waiver for the fee type deal.
Because the new owner can say if she moves out, they can get an alternative.
Right. That way, then everybody is.
So for clarity, are we waiving the full fee or everything but $50?
Well, we still have to do the advertising.
I think, no, that's the renewal fee is $50. I think that's fair. $50, and then advertising and then.
Yeah, we'll waive the regulars.
Okay.
And you can pay for the advertising.
Yeah.
That sound reasonable?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Hope we move ourselves.
See you soon, Deb.
See ya. Bye-bye.
I figure we'll see more and more of those.
All right, we're going to jump from number one down to number nine.
Hopping all over.
ZBA application, JEH Real Estate Investment Company, LLC, 40 Depot Street.
Special.
So this really, I don't think necessarily needs to get addressed by Rob. Certainly, he can. Our normal ZBA application review process, one of the board members usually picks it up and takes a look at it and then talk about it. If you have questions, then I think Rob's here and can answer any, unless you want him to do a presentation, but that'd be deviating from our normal protocol. So Maria's out today. We don't have the standard form. That's the full ZBA application right there.
Thanks for the late coffee.
Somebody's going to have to look this over eventually.
I may be able to summarize in two minutes.
Yeah, if you can summarize all the things that aren't quite fitting the bylaw.
Okay. So this is a special permit, an application for a special permit to reconstruct a partially damaged building. As you may know, in March of last year, a building very near here was damaged by fire. My client owns it. Happened to see it on the agenda this evening, so thought I'd, you know, offer to explain. So the property was a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The building predated zoning. It consisted of the front part, which is sort of that mansard Victorian type, and a rear part. The rear part was irreparably damaged. The front part can be salvaged. So the bylaw says that you can reconstruct a non-conforming structure, even if it's larger than the original footprint, if the zoning board finds that the special permit criteria are met. So this, the proposal is to reconstruct the rear part, and it will be slightly larger than the old footprint, but we believe that we meet the special permit criteria. By the way, if the zoning board does issue the special permit, we will be back before you for a site plan review. This is sort of step one in the permitting process, but as you can see on the plan, this in red is the old part of the building that's going to be salvaged. In this beige are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 proposed units, and there, you can pass that around.
Where's the existing footprint?
There are architectural plans that accompany our application.
No, that's the existing. There was never anything back here?
There was. There was a builder in it.
There were four units in the rear.
So are these these gray ones sticking out?
This was existing, and this is new.
No, but there was something. There was a build in the back.
Yeah, well, I think what you're seeing is the photo.
See, we like to usually see a footprint to show before.
The old one was.
Yeah, we don't have something showing the old.
I know they had something hanging off the back.
So are you increasing any units?
Yes. So originally, there were three in the front and four in the rear. The proposal is to renovate the three in the front and to construct five to the rear.
So add one more unit.
That's, that's the increase.
But you're going to do these as townhomes?
The need, yes, the need for a special permit. And the.
Are these going to be sold, or are they going to be rented?
No, they're going to be rented.
Okay. Just wanted to see what the heartbeat is here. I mean, you have to take everything into account, you know, so. Quick question. Now that it's being redone, do you have to comply with all the new regulations as far as fire?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for mentioning that. A big part of the reason for asking for the additional unit is that the construction costs are significant because of, construction costs are high, and the need for fire suppression, sprinklers, not only in the addition, but most likely in the part that's being renovated as well. It's expensive enough to install fire suppression in new construction, but it's that much more, as I'm sure you know.
Is that a limit?
It's a retrofit. So part of the justification for the additional unit is the construction cost.
So you're already in the front setback with a pre-existing building?
Correct.
So it really doesn't impact that, where you're putting these units, because you're still inside the building footprint and the rear?
The proposed structure meets the setback requirement.
Is this, this parking lot this size right now?
No.
So they're going to make it bigger?
Correct.
Is there any layout of what it used to be?
Up taken.
Any pictures of what it used to be or what it is now?
We may have included an aerial.
From my, my understanding is it stops right about with the handicap. It goes up and up back to about the handicap area.
So what did, what did they have before when they had all the units?
Just dirt?
Yes, I think it was mostly, mostly gravel. This is a plan that you'll be seeing if the special permit is allowed. Actually, even if it's not, and we go back to the four, I think will be before you on a site plan review, but it may be a little tough to see, but you can see on this plan the, I think you can see the existing parking.
Yeah, you need, almost need a, like a brown line or a blue line.
That's what we'll be looking for.
We'll see all that when it comes.
Yeah, so I think. I don't want to get too deep. It's not public here or anything.
It does show, it does show. A little bit, but it's not like.
You can't get it from there.
So we don't have the paper that says.
We don't have anything to sign.
We don't, but I'll take the notes and I'll present it.
And I don't know to what extent you make a recommendation or the like to the zoning board, but, you know, obviously, as I said, whatever recommendation you make, there's no question that if we're granted the relief requested, we'll be back before you on a site plan review. We can do all that. A lot more detail than what you've seen here.
It's just helpful graphically if you could show the building below, the footprint and the parking and the area.
Yeah, we'll see all that for clarity later on.
I'll have the big plan.
That's yours.
No, I put one away.
Was this yours?
Thank you.
That's what ZBA is going to want.
Do you want a motion or just consensus?
I don't think we need an emotion.
I think the consensus is.
Whatever we normally do on ZBA.
Consensus is no objection to the proposal for the special permit.
Okay, that's what we'll say then. So we have no objection to the, we have no objection to it.
Thank you, and thanks for taking the time.
Do we?
Have a good night, folks.
That's my consent.
That's your consent.
I have no trouble.
I didn't, I'm not saying I do or don't. I just didn't.
It's just like.
Jake loves it, actually.
We look it over, we say we have an objection, we don't have an objection? Right, but I, I think, I think we're good. Okay, that's fine. I know vote of objection. Do you have an objection? I'm not sure.
You want, you want an aerial photo or something?
I want them to do things graphically. Understand that it's a sensitive situation.
But in the essence of the special permit to ZBA, you have an objection.
For them to go to ZBA?
They're going to ZBA. They're nothing to do with us right now.
And not objection, meaning as we're not, not supporting it? Or not opposed? We're not, we're not opposed to it. I'm, I think it was a matter of a whisper through here, and that's about all I got out of it.
Well, we review the ZBA application.
That was the whole intended. We'll have it again later. That was the whole intended. Go to ZBA, but just to get his, you know, what we think.
All right. We back on course?
He'll come back to us at site plan review.
We might need to switch around this agenda.
Yeah, we back on course?
Was there a course?
I don't know. We're on nine, and we go back to two?
No, it wasn't that. It's just that, you know, committee puts a colored drawing in front of us and says we're going to add a unit, and it costs a lot of money, so we're going to add a unit.
But it has to go in front of ZBA. We're saying we don't object them going in front of ZBA.
Oh, right, of course I don't object that. But I'm not, so this is not construed as anything of support, otherwise.
It was just saying.
We're not opposing.
They didn't apply to planning, but this is our usual ZBA application review, so we get an opinion. It's our opinion.
Right, but, but is it construed that if we don't have an objection, will we actually support?
No, I don't think so.
I wouldn't say that.
They can proceed.
No, I wouldn't say that either. They just, they just look and say, did the planning board object?
Was there any glaring concern?
Concerns for us, and we have done that. We have voiced concerns regarding two setbacks being triggered, concerns related to.
Sometimes the comments like, you know, if the butters are okay, we're okay, you know, stuff like that.
Yeah, but that's not the way.
That's usually not our comments, but.
No, it is. I mean, you guys say that.
Really? I don't remember that. It's because we don't open a public hearing for.
Majority of the board had no objection.
No, 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 you say that.
Catch it on the next round.
And we'll see it again at site plan review.
If the butters don't object, we don't object.
If it makes it to ZBA. Right, I mean, they'll take some comments and we'll put forth and applies those to that, I just, you know. All good. All right, number two.
Number three.
Just an update. Basically, the, as you may recall, we released two building permits, and they, there was an issue with the amendment, you might recall. You had the subdivision decision, you had the special permit for the flexible development, then you had an amendment to the special permit. The amendment jockeyed around some of the conditions from the flexible development special permit. In doing that, they neglected to include one of the items which required, you know, prior to issuance of a building permit. So I went back and forth with Jay on it. The correspondence is in your packet, and I just, if the board objects to Jay's opinion, let me know, and I'll, I'll make sure that we don't sign off on it. But basically, in spite of the fact that they omitted what's letter J in, in the flexible development special permit, it's one of the affordable housing requirements, and it said no building permits shall be issued, I think it's without a regulatory agreement being in place.
Application being made?
Not the application. That one was modified in, in the amendment, but, but this had to do more with the regulatory agreement and, and an agreement with the Board of Selectmen. So for consistency, since the other two were of the same flavor, um, Jay suggested that it, really it was minor. So I did sign off on the building permit applications, um, but I wanted the board to be aware of that, so.
Yeah.
So what are these saying?
Um, they forgot the J.
And that's why I wanted their lawyer to give us a summary. And they omitted Jay again in the summary.
Seriously?
So what do we need to have done here?
No, I'm just updating them.
All right. It's not that critical, but.
If you object to what I did, then let me know and I'll.
I have no objection.
No.
I am no objection, again, no objection, by consensus. I'm good, I'm good.
All the fits came out good, right?
Yeah.
Everything came out good up there with the fits?
Yeah. Yeah, there was stuff that showed up, but it was, uh, DP said below five percent was acceptable, so.
Was it five percent threshold or?
I signed it.
Five. They said five?
Okay. Well, this is a possible vote, but we're gonna know, though.
I put everything as possible.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, number three.
Yep.
Cardinal Drive Surety Request.
Um, in your packet is some correspondence with town council. I would suggest you take a minute and go through that. And again, it's backwards, so.
Yeah. Second one that I saw.
I did see that the, no parking signs were taken down though, across from Delmoa.
Oh, were they?
Yeah.
They were, oh, really?
At least I couldn't see any.
Nice.
So.
That was nice.
They concluded only the town could do that?
Uh, no, we didn't conclude that. We didn't conclude that.
Maybe they took them down.
Concluded that.
We could request for somebody.
Yeah, we requested.
Yeah, we did. So somebody took them down.
There's no action for us to take care of this?
Somebody's in town.
Well, I would suggest there is an action you have to take because there was a request made to the board. So you need to take an action on the request.
Okay, so you want us to take a.
There's a request for the return of surety to the current developer.
The, since there was no surety posted by the current developer.
There are no.
There's no, so it's self-insured or self?
I need to respond to the request at the end, so.
Okay.
I need a vote from the board.
Want a vote from the board?
What was this for?
Well, there was no.
The whole point of that was, don't release the surety until you have surety.
I agree.
That's the end of the story.
Okay, that's it. But it's also, you know, to your point where if a developer's gonna go build something and stuff like that, he, the lots become the surety when those lots are released. I mean, we've done that with other developers. If, if they're not, if they're not posting surety.
No.
If they're not, if they're not posting surety, right, we would have them build the whole road, make everything all good there.
And that's what happened here.
That was like.
That's what happened.
That was four, over four years after the surety was released. That was the whole point of it.
Correct. In, in this case as well, as well as in cases of other developments that we're going through. When they, when they don't have posted surety, you know.
I don't think they ever have a report.
No, everything, everything we have.
I think it went properly, we have a completed group way at this point.
Yeah, which is a private way.
Yep.
Which is probably better than some of our public ways and some.
No, I take offense to that.
It isn't plowed yet. We took a plow, a gouge is out of it, but.
All right, so you need a vote, Bill, you said?
I would like a vote, yeah.
To.
And Jay says, has to be denied. What's the issue?
There's a request for surety to be returned to the current developer.
Okay.
But. So the vote would be to say no because there is no surety.
Right, the money was for the standard story.
So that's, I just.
There's your second.
Okay, motion's made.
Yep.
Seconded by Tracy.
Yep.
Made by Mike Z, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain?
I'll send a letter.
It's in favor of the.
Close.
I mean, you're still trying to chase that other guy, you're talking from Whitemanville Estates, right?
Whiteman.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Can't find him.
I got your check, I got your check.
Carmen Santiago.
Chapter sixty-one.
Gotta look up here.
Is this a new lot?
We saw a five point one, two acres.
Notice of intent to sell estate of Alice Chase Orange Street by point one nine acres.
Yeah, that's.
Long time ago. Yeah. I wonder what this.
Yeah, we're not.
Let it just keep coming back.
I know, exactly.
They have to pay the back taxes for a certain amount of years and whatever.
Yeah, because she was in sixty-one acres.
It is, it is what it is. Ours was in sixty-one acres when we bought it.
Of course.
And there she was, a close of paying back taxes.
Was she? For, for twenty years, right?
No, for a portion of it, I don't know if it's like the last three years or something.
That's.
No, it's like three or four years or something like that, yeah.
Oh, that's nice, that's nice relief.
That's what you had to do.
No, it's what the sellers had to do when we bought it, it was a fuck. They had to pay some back taxes.
Yeah, because it, yeah.
It was in sixty-one acres.
Yeah, it was sixty-one acres, so yeah, right, you have to pay the back taxes. So, anybody have an objection?
No.
No.
All good.
A motion to recommend to the selectmen that we have no desire to purchase this piece of property?
So moved.
Yep.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by me. By the other Mike.
So vote to not act on right of first refusal.
Correct.
Yeah, recommend to the board of selectmen.
Yeah, what is the proper definition?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm always abstaining, motion care.
Sorry, Mike.
Go ahead, Mike.
What is the proper wording legally?
Right of first refusal.
Right of first refusal.
Two ways.
Recommend.
Right of this. Yeah, but they turned it down, which in a sense is a refusal.
No, no, we're, we're suggesting.
They're, they're, they're selling a piece of property, the town has the right.
First right of refusal.
First right to purchase the property if they want it.
That's what I'm getting at, so the right of first refusal really is the right that.
That they can, that we don't want to purchase it.
So correct.
We don't need a recommendation, we don't actually get the money.
The selectmen. We're recommending that for the selectmen.
But it all comes, goes to.
Oh, you guys wanna buy it now, I was like the price, I'm nowhere.
We did, and it was a very different PNS.
So.
Yeah, different.
And we did it at Concon.
So if it was five dollars.
So, so.
There too.
Yeah.
Ernie, question here.
Yeah.
So I get the whole right of first refusal and stuff like that, but what's missing here is actually what the price of the land would be should the town execute that.
Well, that would be negotiated if we decided to do that.
Kind of, but kinda like, I know, but that's.
It's usually family values.
No, we step in, I think we step in at that, that price, actually.
Yeah, okay, so there's already agreed upon price that's in place?
There's an agreed upon price from the buyer and the seller and, and we have the right to step in.
Okay.
We typically have a copy of the PNS with this request.
Right, that's what you're asking.
This is, this request came back like a year ago, I think. And it was a very big packet and it was like thirty or forty pages. This is just one or two pages and I, I actually cut, took the map from the other thing.
Okay.
So you know what we're talking about.
Yeah.
All right, we're good on that.
Good.
Number five, your board court extension, street light.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna say let's pass over that until, um, I'm not, I was kinda keeping it as a place order, placeholder in case it's developed or wanted to come in.
Is it, are they looking to put a street light at the?
At the very end of the existing road at the start of the new road.
Okay, because it does turn, so I think you would need.
Yeah, the issue here is National Grid is saying that the town has to submit a request to National Grid for this light that's on private property.
Oh, boy.
Um, so that's, it gets a little complicated. So I'm working with the developer.
Tell them what comes to you is when they ask for it, we accept it as a right of.
Yeah.
Right of way.
Yeah.
That's good, that's a good, um.
Challenging.
All right. Lakeside Residential.
Um, so I did ask town council to attend tonight, none of their staff was available. They all had, um, town meetings that they were at.
Surprise, surprise.
And. And, um, with regard to the slides.
Yeah.
Um, they, Adam said he had to talk to C.
CMR PC?
No, CPCT, CP. Citizens Planning Training Collaborative, whatever.
Yeah, TC.
Um, because they own the slides and.
Oh, I thought he owned them.
He, he had to get their permission to release them, so.
Okay.
He didn't get back to me today.
All right.
All right, so, um, have we scheduled for them to come in?
He's coming in at the next meeting, that's at, at least what the plan is currently.
Okay.
They, um, I did also speak with Ron from CMR PC. Um, and Ron wanted to point out that their grant deadline is the end of this calendar year. So we need to make sure that, you know, we utilize them to the extent possible prior to the end of the year. He did say if it runs into next year, he has a few options, um, including our RPA hours, our LPA hours that the towns have. And in addition to that, um, he says he's pretty certain we could probably get another grant.
All right, so we'll, we'll schedule for our next meeting then.
Oh.
If he can't do the slides, then he can give us a summary before the next meeting so that we can actually have time to look it over instead of like the day of and him talking to us. Because, I mean, I've been looking at all the overlays, historical overlays, solar overlay, environmentally sensitive overlays. Like all the towns around us are using overlays for those types of situations. Not necessarily for our type of situation that we're doing. So I need to have all the information before the meeting. Because I think it's not clear what overlay is versus a district change.
Well, I, I also think, I mean, I think this is our third meeting wing on the same item. And, you know, and I get, you know, you could say, you know, you don't wanna be rushed, but we're also not making any progress for the three meetings. You know what I mean? Um, we still gotta go back with him to draft an article, no matter where it goes, right? Draft an article, what we want in there to say regarding existing lots with existing structures or whatever else and kind of build the structure, you know, the framework around that. We haven't built the framework around that, that's gonna take time.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, um, you know, where we were crossed was whether we wanted to do an overlay or whether we wanna do a district change. Um, there's, I think we discussed it about the benefits of both of them back and forth. I mean, I look at it this way, is if we go with a zoning district change for May and if that fails, then we can go with the overlay. But I, I mean, that's my take on it because we've had, you know, back and forth meetings.
I'd rather have the overlay.
What's the definition of overlay?
You know?
That's the problem, we're not understanding what an overlay's purpose is.
Okay. But I know we start changing the zoning or the district of it.
Yeah.
We could run into troubles down the road that we talked about, especially if, say, water sewer command and this and that in some of these areas.
Yeah, they.
Now all of a, now all of a sudden, it opens up Pandora's box. Now you could have a whole, splitting up all these lots to make them these tiny little lots and putting houses and shit or cottages up or whatever.
Do you think that it's gonna run to the rez, that our water sewer?
Like I said before, never, never say never.
Okay.
There's always that possibility, I mean.
Lower my bill, it's only a, you know, thirty percent capacity.
Well, the purpose for tonight was to have Jay in and the, and the gentleman so we can get that information.
Well, not Jay, Adam.
Adam, yeah.
And sometimes on these.
And that didn't happen.
We're not, we're not gonna have that opportunity, so we'll have to put it off for the next meeting and we'll take it up again then.
Well, I would like to have some information before the next meeting.
Yeah, great, great, great.
Even if he's doing this, he's doing the presentation.
I, I asked him for it and.
Yeah. I mean, he's doing the presentation, he should know the material, he can just have, give us a summary of what he was supposed to tell us tonight. So that we can have something to digest if it's such a big problem.
Yeah.
Like, we need to have something ahead of time instead of having it in our packet.
Right, and I, and I guess if we're gonna wait till the next meeting and stuff like that regarding the map, I know there was, um, a Long Island Road, there was parcels that were identified at our meeting, at our discussion that weren't picked up in the latest map that I saw. So, you know, I, I think, you know, right now you're looking at three, four weeks away from our next meeting. So at least we could have the, the map updated, you know, if we're gonna wait till the next. Um, we can work on some type of language draft of the language of, you know, because that's gonna take us a few meetings to go through.
Oh, yeah.
We're not gonna, you know what I mean? So I think we need to look at a draft of the language of what we want written up of.
Well, I think that, that's important to distinguish between overlay, we gotta, we can't put the cart before the horse.
No, no, but you, you still have to have the structure of the article of what you're gonna write.
We can't structure the article till we make up our minds what we want, a overlay district or a regulated district.
You can, you're, you're adding a piece in or taking a piece out, right? So it's pretty swappable that way, but you, but you still wanna put it in what you're, what you're allowing to say. You know, separation regarding Title V requirements and stuff like that, that you, you beat border health requirements. So there's things that you need to be in this section anyways.
We need public input also.
Yeah. So.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, now we're into December, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, and we have.
And there's gonna be a snowstorm.
We're not agreed upon anything at all.
We're not gonna have any information again.
You know, I mean, we'll hear from Adam at the next meeting and we'll have some more information to.
So is there a possibility that Adam's actually not gonna come and present? Because you asked if there was any staff that could come tonight, not specifically Adam?
No, Adam offered, but he said that they were all busy. He said he couldn't do it and Jay can't do it and Lisa can't do it because they're all at town meetings tonight.
But I thought that we wanted Adam.
We do.
Because he's doing, okay.
We do.
But I'm asking, is there a possibility that Adam's actually not gonna be coming?
No, he's already committed.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
Hopefully that will be a snowstorm.
We'll see them at the next meeting.
That could be any.
All right. What number was that on? That was number six. We're up to number seven, we're going right along here, solar regulations.
So I did see.
Anything further on solar regulations, Bill?
Um, well, I think the board had homework, they wanted to review what was distributed and.
Yeah, I did see a couple towns are using the overlay. And then we did get something in our email about being careful about solar zoning.
Correct.
So are they getting around that by doing overlays?
No, that's not what I've heard.
No, that's not what I've heard. Um, I heard that the Mullen, or not Mullen rule.
Dover.
Dover Amendment.
Yeah.
Um, is pretty extensive and some towns are getting burned to some extent by limiting solar, um, in creative ways, let's say. Um, so...
Well, yeah, one of them is in a budding town that's getting sued because of what they implemented. So we're fair. I'm not understanding of that.
So what is Jay saying about this Dover Amendment?
Well, he's always maintained you really can't restrict it.
Can't do nothing about it.
We've looked at a couple of samples, you know, we looked at Sutton, Webster, I think. And they, they did limit, they said solar is allowable anywhere, but they limited, they put a cap on the size. And that's becoming, and that's becoming the issue is, you know, that's limiting, so, um, so those things are being challenged now.
Dover Rule.
But when we have the special permit site plan review, can't we put our conditions on that versus it just being an open-ended? Like, that was the problem.
Well, I would say if Adam's coming to our next meeting, why don't we generate a list of questions we can ask him and get him to them in advance?
Because that may be a better option for overlay, because I've seen that as a solar, solar overlay district on multiple people's, multiple towns.
How many part of the site plan review at that time?
Well, like the last one in the residential zone, we had to pretty much issue that.
Right.
Special permit. So if we can conditionally have something in there for solar regs, like saying, you know, whatever we want to say.
Like a buffer zone and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah, like conditional stuff that if you go...
Or where the entrance road is and stuff of that nature.
Yeah, yeah, those types of things. Maybe a bit more clear.
Right.
Because you can condition it or no?
Uh, what?
For the Dover part.
I don't think you can, can limit it.
Yeah.
So... But we can create the buffer zone around and things of that nature, right?
Like say your proposal...
During site plan review, you can negotiate, you negotiate. Typically throughout that process, an applicant will be willing to work with the board to some extent.
Right.
You know, and if that means preserving a butter's properties by having a buffer, usually they won't push back on that. But if you start saying, hey, you can't have, you know, anything more than a two megawatt or one megawatt.
That's not going to fly.
Right, because technology today, the panels are getting more powerful and everything.
Yeah.
So what you said as a number today is extinct in six months.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, because...
Literally.
Because we calculated that what, one megawatt was 4,000 panels of today's technology.
Yeah.
4,000 panels. And I think we're like... I know, and that's what we were discussing about it.
I waited for one panel hours ago.
No, no, but Ernie, that was allowed as, as a small site. And I was like, wait a second, guys, 4,000 panels. That's nine acres.
The numbers were not good.
You know what I mean? So, pretty extensive.
I mean, I think what we've been doing so far has been working quite well, I think. So I think since, since Adam will be here next meeting, it just makes sense to let's think about some questions for him and then, you know, put it to him.
More homework. Thanks, Eric. All right, number eight, 2020 planning board meeting schedule, possible vote. Everybody have that in the packet?
When's our next meeting?
Uh, December 10th. I'll make a motion to accept the 2020 Douglas Planning Board meeting schedule.
You sure none of these states conflict with a holiday or a...
They're not on the weekends.
I can assure you, my Eagle High staff thought of that.
Because we got burnt in conservation.
Ah, that's conservation. I didn't speak to conservation. I didn't speak to conservation.
Because you're on the planning board over here. It's about like, yeah, three summer months and then November December.
Everybody, everybody okay with this?
I'll second the motion.
A motion made by Mike Zee, seconded by Tracy to adopt our meeting schedule. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, vote in care.
So it still doesn't say the word agenda.
Ten.
Okay.
Oh, his does.
No, this one doesn't.
Yeah, ours does.
Minutes.
Here we go.
Oh, there.
Yeah.
Number 10, purchase of chairs for meeting room, possible vote.
I'll let Aaron take it from here.
I'm falling asleep in this chair. That's pretty nice.
One, one thing that was pointed out to me is that, I mean, we're not the only board that uses this room. And also, when we meet with outside people, this is the meeting, when they meet, we meet in with whatever grants, whatever, whatever's going on, people that are coming into town to meet with the selectmen, not the selectmen, but, um, zoning, staff, this is the room they meet in. And these chairs are pretty old. They squeaky, they're...
Spoiled enough, Bob chairs.
When you have people from out of town coming in, I, I, I'm willing to pony up for a couple of chairs if the rest of the boards are as well.
What does that mean, pony up? Who's ponying up? Our budget out of the planning board or conversely?
No, us personally.
You have to buy yours.
No, no, but I don't understand what that...
We'll buy two.
I know, just lock it up in the closet.
And where do these go? Landfill?
These?
We donate them to, uh...
Highway.
Cars for kids, chairs for kids or something like that.
I have no idea what happens to these.
The thought of just putting these in the landfills.
No, 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 they get, they get moved up to the old schoolhouse there on, uh...
BFW.
BFW.
A lot to make room for.
Storage.
Storage.
Man, I have a suggestion while we do all this.
Raiders of the Lost Ark at the end.
Wait, I have a question too.
I have one question while we do all this.
Yeah.
I know these chairs, how about putting a light over where the easel is?
I would promote a light.
That's a great idea. Because, I mean, every time there's a presentation, everybody's, they go to the easel. And all it is, is running a wire over to, no, I leave a light over there.
All it is.
For that easel.
They run it in the ceiling, you know?
Right, with the, I'm saying, seriously, many a times people are saying, where on that is it? Because it's over there in the dark corner.
Okay. I have no objection to that, but I mean, let's do the chairs.
I'll vote on the light.
We've been doing these chairs for two meetings now.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I like that.
How many grants are we currently applying for? You've mentioned grant people that are coming in.
I'm just, people that come in to...
So how many grants do we have right now that we've applied for?
I have no idea.
I would say at least a half a dozen.
Yeah, I was going to say six that I think of.
Do we have a list of those?
But everybody that comes to the town hall to meet with, with people, usually they meet in this room.
Right, yeah.
And these, these chairs are...
And then you said there's a lot of people that meet in here, so why wouldn't we be able to have one board each pay for a chair?
Because some of them don't have a budget.
I'm saying, I'm willing to go along with it if the other boards, if that's what they decide to do. Everybody wants to pony up for a couple of chairs. I have no objection to us ponying up for a couple of chairs.
I agree with that.
But we don't know.
We don't know because we've already voted no on CONCOM, so...
I'm not saying buy them tonight. I'm not saying, I'm not saying, see what the people think.
So where are the chairs going to go in storage?
Storage to the death. So it's, it's like the Raiders of the Lost Ark at the end, that big vault and all that stuff.
Okay.
The chairs.
Store in the warehouse.
Have a motion where they're repurposed.
I haven't even looked at that.
Or another department or whoever.
Bill's still waiting to hear back from the other boards.
I was going to throw it out.
This is the memo that was put together and...
It might look kind of city with, uh, silly with like modern, nice chairs and this old school table though, too. I'm just saying that.
They kept wooden chairs.
Our new table missing out too.
And this table can talk though.
Yeah, this table's been here since the building was built.
Exactly.
Okay.
But no, I mean, you figure how many years yourself have been here with all these same chairs?
Yeah, they've been here a long time.
Ten years, going on 10 years.
Mike can't adjust his up and down. This one's...
Mine's great now. I, I don't know, this one's...
I hear this during the meeting when I listen to it. Squeak, 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 squeak.
Pulls back pretty good without falling.
And in reality, we don't ask for anything. And we volunteer all of our time. All we ask for is a few chairs.
We don't...
And we, we didn't do the iPods either. We didn't get those.
No, I gave you pricing and I don't think you guys went for that, so.
Well, shouldn't we be sitting in chairs before we buy chairs? Just make sure they're good. Because not all chairs are...
Well, we can make our, our next meeting standing.
If we're going to do it, we make a visit at tables.
One chair, one iPod.
That's right.
Per, per, per.
Per board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're not agreeing to anything, right?
Not yet, that's not yet.
How do we know how, how the, um, cost is going to be distributed between all these boards and stuff?
We don't, we're just saying.
And how many chairs?
We'll see first who wants to contribute or who thinks it's, you know, worthwhile. Then, then, then if it's, if there's enough boards that'll like, talk about it again.
If not, we'll ask, we'll ask them to buy us.
I don't see anything wrong with these chairs, but...
Oh, yeah?
Little W, I forgot the little W's. Little WD-40.
It's like scraping fingernails on a plaque. All right, so Bill, find out if anybody else is willing to go along with this proposal and take it to the...
And a light.
Who else was asked, do you know?
It had a light to it, too, what the hell.
I think all the board, I think the list is at the top.
Can we just swap them up with the selectmen?
Cemetery commission.
There you go.
Okay. Building facilities, that sounds amazing.
We could ask building facilities to buy them too.
Well, that's the first one on the list. What did they say?
They haven't discussed it yet.
Oh.
This just came out when? November 7th.
Like two weeks ago.
We talked about it in October.
The last meeting.
This memo's November 7th.
Yeah, but we, you tried to get us to buy them.
It was on our agenda last, last month.
Yeah.
October 27th.
You said, put a memo together, talk to all their boards, and that's what we're doing.
Oh, I thought, I thought they were already, they were already in contact.
You only asked CONCOM and planning the first time?
We start with the big boys and then move on to the little boys.
Okay.
Very modern.
Yeah. That's the justice.
All right, so we'll wait for further information on it.
Kick consensus?
Turn the light.
Meeting minutes.
Oh, 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 yeah, Mike has a, um...
Go ahead, Mike.
Motion.
A motion?
You want a motion?
I'm going to support it. Yeah, it's a possible vote.
Okay.
On what?
On a disaffirmative.
Motion for a light over that easel. Go ahead.
Second.
This is a motion to have a light?
It's all over the easel for the presentation of all of our visitors that come here for all of our grants that we get.
Well, that's to be determined.
Yeah, let's get, let's get a number on it.
Yeah.
At price?
Yeah.
Well, we don't need to vote on that. We can just ask.
So let's ask for it so we can get it for our next meeting. So we can get it for our next meeting if possible.
Get a, get a, why can't we just tell building facilities?
It's building facilities. I mean, so I just kick it to Adam and Adam will get back on.
Great, you're awesome. Big progress. 21st century. Our vision for 2020.
Are you guys going to pay for it?
Perfect.
Are you guys going to pay for that?
I want building facilities to pay for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is going to be beautiful.
Ernie, Ernie's tapped out after two chairs.
Worst case, we can do a wireless one.
Saturday morning.
We're tapped out.
It's a Monday morning, there'll be a light.
Run it up there.
Hang a flashlight if we have.
I like one of those lights.
That's what Adam's going to come out. Here's a flashlight.
Here's a flashlight, hang it up. Find out, find out if they'll do that.
Put it on one of those cameras.
There you go.
All right, meeting minutes.
All right, Mike.
Now I do have a question or two. October 8th, meeting minutes. Page two. Um, one, two, three, four, five, six. About six lines up from the bottom. It says Mr. Labby. Oh, you used to know Labby. Stated that site distances were checked to have 30 miles per hour, and this just may be me, it sounds funny to me. Are you talking about distances or you're talking about speed here?
Distance.
Uh, site distance is related to speed. It's going to vary with the speed that the posted speed limit is at, so...
It's not a sight li- line of sight like when you're coming out of your driveway kind of line of sight.
Well, it is. It is. It's a cornering site distance, but you need to see further if cars are traveling faster, obviously.
It's okay then, I guess. All right, forget that.
The above there, um, for the adult entertainment zone, the entire town is subject to litigation? Yeah, that's correct. Pretty sure you said that. Right.
Subject to litigation? No.
The end of the sentence was not audible.
What, what page is this?
Um, above, um...
Middle of the page.
One.
Page two.
Fourth paragraph, I think.
We're in the middle almost.
I think it's subject to permitting, right? Like it's permissible in all areas if you don't have a designated area that's for us. It's per, I could put one on the main street, like where the, the store is closing.
It's subject to litigation.
No, it's not litigation. It's, um, subject to, I'm trying to fit it in her sentence. Entire town is, is open to, to, uh, that use. Is open to that use, I'd say.
Open to that use.
Okay. Open to that use.
And the entire town is open to that use?
Yes.
You're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. You said that like, what, six months ago?
Also. Page four. Second paragraph, excuse me, third paragraph. Mr. Kandif site.
Site?
S-I-T-E.
Yeah.
I don't know if you... Commended aside or modified aside or... There's a verb missing.
Maybe Mr. Kandif said or indicated that the site has been sitting dormant.
The site has been sitting dormant.
Yeah, that's what's stated.
Stated or indicated.
Yeah, indicated the site.
Yeah.
Why don't we just say indicated?
Good catch, Mike.
Indicated.
Yeah. Bill, did you say, you meant indicated, right?
Yes.
Unless you cited someone else's name.
Then it would be C-I-T.
Right.
E.
No word from them for the Asbault plan?
No, and I did, did follow up and with a request.
And what's that?
Fine.
Second.
Fine, I'm fine.
It's fine. Is it pine?
Oh, yeah, and pine. Anything else?
Make a motion? Yeah, go ahead. We, I'll make a motion. We approve the meeting minutes as modified for October 8th. A minute, 20 minutes, a minute. As amended. Motion made by Mike Zee.
Second.
Seconded by Aaron. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstain. Motion carries. While we're on the topic, how come that's listed on our agendas anymore? Upcoming meetings.
It is, upcoming meetings on the bottom.
Oh, they moved, okay.
Remember we were reorganizing this thing?
Yeah. What are we doing with the adult entertainment district bylaw? What are we doing with that?
What?
You have it on the agenda.
No, yeah, it was asked to be put on.
No, for me.
All right.
It's in the forests right now. It's in the state forest.
Are we going to start moving stuff around that's, that's out of place?
They're not going to build in the state forests, and if we don't have a designated area zone, then they can put it anyplace they want.
Because Ron was here, that's why I asked him.
Okay.
So we have to look at it again, because the state forest bought the land that we had originally designated.
Well, there's also, um, this village business, um, if we're going to look at parcels that are in the state forest or we're going to update our state forest owning stuff, we have, but our industrial land is all marked off as, but it's all state forest. So there's no purpose of that.
Well, no, it's not state forest. State forest, let's be clear, is a zoning map designation. When it was adopted, maybe 24 years ago, that's what the state owned, that green boundary. Now the state's acquired significantly more land since then, so some of it's industrial, some is other zoning districts. But, but the state owns more than is state forest.
Than shown.
Yeah.
So we should actually update our maps?
Not necessarily. I mean, you don't have to.
We should.
You can, you can.
It's kind of foolish that we know there'll never be an industrial park off of Route 16 there because...
Trumps the zoning, right?
Yeah, it's already owned by the state.
And it's actually a good thing for the town from a perspective standpoint for people seeing how much green we have, how much...
Green, correct, correct.
It's, it's a positive thing for the town.
It's also, it's also a negotiation tool for the selectmen to negotiate, hey, you take an X square feet or X acre, acreage of industrial.
That we can't collect taxes on.
That's right.
But we're still not collecting on it.
So if it's no longer industrial, then...
Loss of income, yeah.
The only point for the adult entertainment was because we don't have, we didn't replace it. That's, we need to have it.
Yeah.
That, the other industrial stuff, it doesn't really matter. It's because we have zero of all entertainment.
Everything but 300 feet on the south side.
South side of Route 16?
On the Webster line.
Our gazebo.
Yeah.
No, on the Webster line.
Oh, on the Webster line.
So we, we're not going to show, we're not going to show our, actually what the state owns and the amount of state forests that's, of, of what the town owns, because we leave it marked industrial because we don't get a check anyways?
No, I think they negotiate deals and they have negotiated deals with the state because they're impacted negatively.
Give me the ping.
State.
No, state gives us a few more pennies. Yeah, a few more pennies.
We, we've had capital donations from the state as a result of being impacted.
We approved it.
Not taxes.
As recommended.
Well, the 22nd amendment.
Okay.
I didn't see anything about the 22nd, um, that caught my eye. I got, what is, under discussion on the first page, missed, um, under number two, says Ms. Sharkey has reviewed the tape and Mr. Marx had said he was fine with the zoning district as long as recommendations were had. I don't understand what that is.
I said that.
Did I say that?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, I, that might be a little hearsay.
From the previous tape?
That was from you.
Yeah, no, but it's from the previous tape. Yeah, no, but it's from the previous tape.
Previous meetings.
Well.
And we're back.
That's up to the board.
We're probably in Aug.
Well, I said that, this is what was said at the meeting, I said that.
And it's related, it's related to August and September discussions.
I can say, you can say, I reviewed it and said that you said that, or, I mean, that, that's what I said.
I just, well, okay.
Well, I think, uh, I think the one, the one thing I noticed is, is it says, the town's bylaws minimum for VR, yeah, fifteen foot separation, okay.
So do you remember saying it? I, vaguely, I mean, we, I, I, it was just conversation and discussion amongst us, I don't remember every word I said, but I, I mean, I, I made it clear many times that I was in favor of an overlay district. And I, and I may have said I would probably be okay with the.
I think what you said at that meeting, this meeting, was I was against the zoning change, and then I said, I reviewed the tape and you said you were okay with certain conditions on, within that bylaw.
No matter, no matter what, we, we're gonna have the conditions.
I don't, I, I just.
In the direction we go in, we're gonna have the conditions in there.
I would, I probably may have said that the zoning district would be okay if, if, I could say a lot of it.
Yeah, which I said was recommendations, but maybe I said.
I've always been in favor of the overlay as far as if we were gonna do this at all, so I, I just wanna make that clear, you can leave it in there if you want, if you can take it out, I don't care, but I'm just, I, if I said that, I don't remember saying that exactly, and, and I'm better opposed to a district change since we started this.
What's this other, you into other?
I just wanna make, make clear my position on it, that's all.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's not in the.
There was a lot of discussion going back and forth.
October eighth.
If we put every word that everybody said, it'd be a book every week to read.
Well, I think it was because you had said you were against it, and that's why I had said, well, the last meeting you said you were okay as long as there was conditions added to the bylaw.
I think I was trying to reference that there would probably have to be a heck of a lot of conditions for me to approve as a zoning district, I mean, that was probably the point I was trying.
So would they re-up, would they have taken it out?
They could probably summarize it as, discussion was held, I mean, I don't think they had to get.
Well, he's, you've often said that you're a proponent of overlays, not. No, I'm, I'm, I'm an opponent of, I mean, I'd be more in favor of the overlay than, than, than district change.
An advocate of.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, if I said this, I, it might have been in the midst of the conversation, I don't know. So, if you wanna strike it, you can, if you wanna leave it in there, that's fine too, but I, I, I just wanna make my position clear on how.
Tracy, did you go to the seminar on ten twenty-nine?
I did not.
So you didn't, you didn't get the slides?
Nope, that's why I asked you for the slides.
Well, I didn't go to it.
The guy that was coming.
The minute said you were going, that's why.
Yeah, I was, but something came up.
So what do we do with Miss Sharky reviewing the taped sentence? Leave it, scratch it, modify it?
Just leave it, no, it's not critical.
Yeah, I mean, just so we.
Yeah, you cleared it up.
Tell those guys what they get back to.
What I, what my intention.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think I'm more, um, we had a longer discussion about the car no drive surety request in here.
Okay, what page is that on?
That's on page two, and stuff like that, um. It says in here, Mr. Tissino never asked for the bond money. Uh, now, Mr. Tissino's gonna work. So I'm kinda like, a little confused, now, Mr. Tissino brought it in, he's done the work, but Mr. Tissino's never asked for the bond money, so, but his request was for the bond money, of the surety.
Yeah, I think they contradict, yeah, something was said.
I don't know.
And Mr. Kandif replied that a, a, a surety was in the form of a no build covenant.
But, but the, the whole thing was, the, I mean, item number four on that agenda was asking for surety request.
Yeah, ask for the release of.
And then it says in here that he, Mr. Tissino never asked for the bond money, I mean, so, I don't know, it's a little contradiction of what the item, the agenda item was versus what was stated.
I think that was referred to as that he had never asked for it before, that was the first time.
Prior to, so, so probably when I word, word prior to. Maybe prior to.
I think that's what.
Yeah, I think we should just add the word prior to.
Right.
You know, Mr. Tissino never asked for the bond money prior to.
Prior to the.
Prior to the past, yeah, or in the past, yeah, we could add that notation there. Makes sense, Bill?
Sure. Well, if that's true, we should, I can't find it now, we should modify, uh, where does he say, I never asked?
Yeah, it's the second, second paragraph.
Listening with my ears.
Huh? Second paragraph left?
Yeah, it's in the second paragraph on, on page two, number four.
Did you say that?
Alright, it's a nice request, I don't know.
Maybe he meant, he was never asked to post bond money?
Yeah, just, it's vague.
Yeah.
That's why I'm.
Yeah, that was good.
Definitely more cases that we dealt with. Oh, Mike's here. No, what the hell is that? You got a whole nother, is that, is that someone's tax return?
We don't have, we don't have this.
Soil, soil, soil takeoff? Um, did you wanna discuss, um, the residential compound? If Mike's here, you don't want us to.
We gotta get to that first. No, we haven't, we haven't.
I'm good with that, that change.
I don't think it's on the agenda.
It is. No, it's not. So, are we admitting, you don't admit anything in that paragraph, do we?
I don't know. I, I think, I think all we gotta do is, yeah, at the, at the end of, Mr. Tissino never asked for the bond money prior to, in the past, that's it, done.
On the pool.
That clears it up.
Thank you.
It doesn't, it doesn't say whether he put it up, he said he's never asked for.
Correct.
So, very confusing.
Yeah.
Nobody asked him to put up the bond money, it's kinda, sounds like that's what he's saying. Is that true?
No, he, he requested sure, uh, he wanted lot releases at one point, and I came up with a bond estimate, and he didn't wanna post it. So they decided to construct the road fully before the lots were released.
And then he applied, that he received, okay.
I was not sure.
Surety formed that, okay.
I don't think we have to change it.
No, no, I think it's okay, that clears it up a little bit.
He says, he says, Mr. Tissino wasn't asked for bond money, whereas in here it says he was not.
What he pointed on him back.
We'll go forward with that now.
He wasn't asked.
His last statement actually clarifies it.
He was, he was, yeah, and he didn't wanna put up the bond money, so he completed the road for.
Yeah.
So we can leave it alone, yeah, okay.
That's it.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
Uh, that we approve, meeting minutes as written for October twenty-second. Twenty-nine, eight.
Second.
Who seconded it?
Jake.
Jake, okay, made by Mike G, seconded by Jake, any further discussion, all those in favor?
I.
Oppose abstain?
I abstain.
You abstain?
I was, yeah.
One abstention from Mike Z.
Yeah.
He wasn't here.
First time in a long time.
Yeah, right, yeah. Alright, where are we here, agenda, we're gonna put my agenda.
New business, old business question I have.
Ah. New business or old business?
Asbilly. Is it new or old?
Old, Asbilly, where they did the liquid fill.
Upton remediation.
Ever hear what's going on?
I have not heard back from them, um, well, verbally, I don't think we got a written plan, but verbally, they suggested they were going to.
Agenda I gave you must have been his.
Waiting for formal submittal, I've talked to their engineer, um, they're gonna give me a plan showing proposed grades and get the boards sign off on proposed grades.
All of a sudden I had two, and I just.
That's the way it's been presented to me verbally.
Cause there was a change of the guard there type deal, and I thought you said the new people were willing to do the Asbilly as they requested.
Correct.
To get this taken care of.
Correct.
But that's been.
I'll call, I'll call Bruce again.
Quite a few months, I, I think, right?
It has.
What did you be talking about, Mike?
Upton site.
Upton, you'd like to keep a, a bug going on that, to try to pull that one around?
Another case of, there's bond money, right?
Yeah, there's, yeah, I think so, right, there's bond money there.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we really should, um, take the bond and do the work, if the person's not gonna do it.
But there was a change of the guard there.
He's indicating he, he is going to do it, he's working with an engineer, I spoke with the engineer.
Okay.
Can we get a?
They're going to give us a plan showing what they want to do, they're gonna submit it to the board, get the board to approve it, and then do the work.
Can we get a general ETA?
I will ask for that.
Please, tell them that the board would like an ETA because, you know, we're talking another twelve months, or we're talking here soon, I mean, it's been dragging on too long.
Right.
At least I think it has.
They're still conducting business there, too, so.
Are they?
They are bringing in some fill material, yes. That's my understanding, yes.
Are the reports being done?
East Main heads towards, uh, golf course.
They have it?
And then we're gonna get a new, um, updated version of the, the bond.
Yes, I haven't finished, I've started it, I haven't finished it.
That street's a mess, it's mugged, it's dirt.
Alright, future agenda items, let them over.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay.
Bill, anything? Oh, I'm sorry.
New business, there's the, um, the state took the old, uh, railroad trunk line, right?
Okay.
Didn't they, recently?
I know they've been working on surveying it, um, I don't know if they've taken it or.
Yeah, so a portion of that.
What's that?
Their railroad trunk line?
Yeah.